I'm going to call to order the September 23 Council meeting of the Newport Beach City Council and move into the study session with a roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Daigle is currently absent, but she is on her way. Everyone else is present.
Thank you. We will move into SS1 clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner.
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Petros.
I had one. I just wanted to, on item five, wanted to make sure that we're satisfied that the resolution with the contractor in question is wrapping up and that, one, the message is getting out to the contracting community, don't mess with us, and that you feel comfortable that all the remedies are being undertaken.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. I believe we have, if you notice in this item, we actually assess liquidated damages. We don't often do that, but sometimes we have to prove the point to contracting community that we are serious. This particular contractor, I don't know if he was over his head or just couldn't produce on the job, maybe it's his first public job, but we had some problems completing the work. So we did end up helping him at the end, deducting that out of it, and assessing him five days' liquidated damages at $1,000 a day. I think we were at conclusion with him, and don't expect any else on it.
Good. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Selig.
I have none.
All right, Councilman Hen.
None for me.
Councilman Curry.
None for me.
And I have none, just to make the comment on item number six. We completed the public restroom building, 4% under budget and eight days ahead of schedule. Congratulations once again. With that, we'll move on to SS2, update on our major parks projects.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight, we wanted to kind of update you on our major park projects that are going on, Marina Park and Sunset Ridge specifically. And I've got a PowerPoint for you here. So we'll start in with Marina Park and give you kind of an update on that. But for the benefit of the folks at home and in the audience, just some background. As you know, Marina Park, 10-acre park, it has two major buildings in it, a 10,000-square-foot community center and 11,000-square-foot sailing center. It also contains 23 visitor-serving slips, a children's-themed play area, a fitness circuit. We're going to build a café within the sailing center, a picnic area, and 177 new parking spots. And it also contains a Girl Scout house. This is privately funded, and I'll get into that a little bit later, but it's part of the overall project. And then on the far side of this screen, on the left, you'll see the 19th Street restroom, which is also being redeveloped. So the park has been designed and bid in several phases. We have four major bid packages in order to save costs and efficiency. The first major bid package was Bid Package 1 is where we actually demoed the mobile home park that was there and took the palm trees and relocated them into a holding area. While doing the demo, we had some hazard abatement. It was some old mobile homes in there, some asbestos tiles and other things we had to deal with. While we were also in the bidding process, we found someone who would actually take a large portion of the existing mobile homes, 47 out of the 57, and reuse them. They took them off-site for reuse, actually gave us a credit of about $60,000 back into the project. And then there was other assimilated demo and construction. If you remember too, we demoed the mobile home park, and we left the front part of the park and the tennis courts available to the public for another eight months while we did this, and we started the Marina project right behind this. Just some pictures of the demolition there. You can see the palm trees in the middle. We have them all put together in a holding pin while we're doing the rest of the park, and then they'll be distributed out. One of the requirements from the Coast Commission, if you remember, is that we couldn't replace the washpatoni palm trees. We had to use them on-site. They did allow us to use them, though. The next major bid package that went out was the Marina basin and the building pads, and this is just concluding right now. This project basically had another operator on, Dutra come in, and they did the concrete sheet piles. They did the stone columns. This picture here represents a machine doing the stone columns. And as you can see, I'm looking at my mouse here, this is the stone column machine. It's on a crane. What they would do is they'd drill this down into the soil about 30 feet, and then this loader right here is loading a bucket at the bottom, which is then hoisted up and put it in this hopper, and the stone is put in, and the apparatus is retracted from the ground, and we leave a solid stone column. This has to do with the seismic reliability of the project. We did several hundred of these stone columns as part of it. They also did the Marina dredging and the handrail installation. If you look at this slide on the left, you'll see the actual construction of the sheet piles here. This is part of the west wall of the basin going in. And then on top of those walls, we would have a cap that goes on there. We actually had put a design curve cap on this one. You'll see it for the pictures down below. And then down below, you'll see the installation, the tieback rods. There are two sets on the west wall, which is at the bottom slide there. There is one at the top along the cap, and this is the second layer down. We had to go about 10 feet, de-water the whole area, and set another set of tie rods along here. Very complex project, but went well. With that now, the wall in, we started the dredging operation. You can see that on the top. There's the dredge and this gauve up there working to take the sand material out. That sand material proved beneficial to our beaches. We took 5,000 yards to the bottom-left corner, China Cove Beach, and filled that beach up, much to the happiness of all the residents, and they've been looking for that material for some time. The other lower side is the 10,000 yards we put at the south side of the pier, which went well, other than, as you recall, we had a gas line, a major gas line we hit as part of that construction, and had a little blemish on that, but it turned out in the end pretty good. And then at the top, you'll see the scowl and the barge going off where the remaining 20,000 yards was removed and being taken over to the growing field, dumped about 40th Street, putting material in the near-shore zone. This contractor also was responsible for doing the handrail, and you can see the handrail construction going in. It's a very ornate, nice handrail. We spent a lot of time on this in the design process to get it right. I think it's going to frame the Marina real well. And down below, you can see the new Marina that was born. Basically, a little sand left. We've got that finishing up this week, and it will be done with all the sand removal. It was a note that one of the coastal staff folks told me at one of the meetings that this was the first Marina permitted in 23 years in California. So it's a real accomplishment by the city to pull that off.
Whose chain-link fence is that?
That chain-link fence is actually a temporary construction fence. You're looking down from the back bay towards Balboa Boulevard, and on your right-hand side would be the new sailing center. So we put a fence up just to keep the construction area safe. Our third package that actually is underway now, we overlap Package 2 and 3 to expedite the schedule, is the remaining demolition of the front area, the tennis courts, the Balboa House, the Girl Scout House, and the park that was there. And then it also has the building foundations, the construction of the building and the park facilities. Currently, they're doing the underground utilities, which you see on the right-hand side there. We're taking the electric pole line that runs right through the property, and we'll be undergrounding all that, which will be the future parking lot and play area. And they're working on the building foundations right now. These are a couple pictures of the sailing center foundations going in. You can see the trenches being cut and the steel cages that'll be lowered in there. They'll backfill that with concrete and then start the steel erection, which we expect probably in the next few weeks to start. On a note, I did want to point out that we were originally planning to do this building to a LEED certification of Silver, and we had met with our council working group to discuss this earlier and wanted to bring this to your attention. Well, in the process of designing this project and going through the LEED certification process, we came across an item where the United States Green Building Council kind of changed the interpretation of their standards. It's the same rule, but they're looking at it differently now. And what it did do, it caused our design not to meet the qualifying prerequisite level for the ventilation portion of the building. We looked at this in depth. We had a lot of talks, went up the ladder with the Green Building Council, and we found we couldn't move the requirement. They are basically saying, "It's very complex, but it has to do with open operable windows within 25 feet of any open area." And when we built Oasis and several other jobs that have been built, large municipal spaces of, for instance, our meeting rooms in the municipal center would qualify. The back wall's about 35 feet away, but because it's all adjoined and there's plenty of airspace, under the old reading of it, it would qualify as appropriate for the regulation and meet the prerequisite. Now, the reading, it doesn't. They say you've got to be within 25 feet of that. So we looked at what the fix was on this, and we'd have to modify the ventilation and inducting system. It would be about $30,000 to add that additional ducting system. It also might even have some negative benefits because we also add outside air to the system to make up for some of the non-window-related air. And the bottom line is, when we talk to the professionals who designed this, we don't get any real benefit of doing this. There's no added benefit. There's no efficiencies gained. So the question was, it's just about the plaque now. If you want to get it certified, we can pay $30,000 and also have some other concern risks about other things we hit, like sprinkling lines and things that may add cost to it, to go after that. So the discussion led to the thought that, you know, we basically met the intent of LEED Silver. We built a LEED Silver building. We've got all the energy efficiency we planned in it. We're not reducing that. We're still going to do commissioning and other things to the building. So why spend the additional $30,000 just to get the plaque, basically? We do meet the California Green Building Council level, which is built to the 2011 building code. So our recommendation is just to construct it per plans, know that you've got a very efficient building still, and not spend the additional $30,000 to basically certify it.
When we were working, developing our green building guidelines with the Green Building Guidelines Committee, this was a topic, and the committee as a whole felt that to limit it simply to a LEED certification, well, it was not necessarily the goal. And it might limit it. There might be other certifications we'd like, or just to meet the standards. That was the important thing, not the plaque.
Right.
So I don't think this is contrary. We have decided, as a general policy, to make our public buildings LEED certified, but to me, that means meeting those energy requirements, not necessarily having the plaque.
Thank you. And Councilmember Gardner, I think we've achieved that, and it's a very good point here, because we are going to do the commissioning. We actually did a lot of things, when you look back at this slide, with reusing the trailers, for instance, is a LEED requirement. It has nothing to do with energy efficiency, but it's reuse. We recycle a lot of materials. We're still doing that as part of the project, so. The next bid package that'll be coming up advertised this fall is then the docks and the apparatuses for the Marina itself. This includes docks, hoists, utilities, Wi-Fi, all the dock accessories to build that facility. And we'll be advertising it to basically bring it up to the completion date for the entire project. We waited a while on this. We didn't want to have vacant docks out there while we're building the rest of the project because it could attract seals and other things. So we thought we'd catch it up. It's part of the project, and you'll see that soon in the next few months. I did mention the Girl Scouts earlier, and we, as you know, we went through several redactions with them and offered them to actually join our project early on in the bid process. We have received confirmation from the Girl Scouts now that they plan to build the project as a separate project at the end of our project now, which is in accordance with their lease terms. So we'll be looking forward to that coming down the road here. As for schedule, we are on schedule in this project. Here's some highlights we've done. We purchased the SCE property that you're aware of. We had our first bid package go out in October 2013. That bid package is complete as of February 2014. Bid Package 2 is just about done now, September 2014. It'll be concluding. We are on schedule to complete this project in spring 2016. I had mentioned to say we're probably a little ahead of schedule, but I don't want to commit to that yet, but we're looking at, still on schedule on that. And then the Bid Package 4 will go out, as I mentioned, to complete with the end of Bid Package 3, and the FFNE will be starting right now. Laura Detwiler and her group are starting to look at that, and we'll catch that up too with the completion of Bid Package 3. As for the budget, this slide represents, and you've seen this, I send this out monthly, the budget and the project. On the left-hand side, you can see the original budget. At the bottom, we had a budget for the entire project of $39.5 million. On the other side, we're tracking the actual costs, and as things get closed out, they're complete. The numbers in red mean things are still in flux. We have bids and change orders and things. But currently, the construction hard cost is tracking a little below budget, and the overall budget, you look at the bottom, is basically running about $38.3 million, which is below the $39.5. I'll also note that in all these numbers, if you look next to the soft costs and the hard costs, there are contingencies for design and construction that are still within that number. So for instance, the hard-cost construction is $28.4 million, but there's still $2.2 million included in that number that we haven't used and hopefully not used as part of the construction contingency. And then the council also reserved about $2 million down that last line, six there at the bottom, just in case they wanted to add some to the project or make any changes. So we haven't touched any of that yet either. And if there's no questions on Marina Park, I'll move into Sunset Ridge.
Move on.
Sunset Ridge. This project is progressing really well. We're getting close to the end here. As you recall, this is the design that was approved by the Coast Commission, and the project included a pony baseball field, two soccer fields, restrooms, child's play area, picnic area, butterfly garden, an overlook, and meandering sidewalks through it. Pictures here are before and after grading. Back in July of 2012 when we started, you could see how the Newport Crest Townhomes were on the left there, and they had an old retaining wall buttressing their development, a real sharp slope in the background. The grading actually took a lot of that material and filled in against their wall, as you see in the lower slide there, which actually was a great asset to them because they don't have to worry about that retaining wall having ever failed in the future. And we flattened out that slope in the far distance, you can see a little bit, to make it a little bit more accessible. In this picture, you can see the restrooms, and the ball diamond is in the future with all the trucks right there. That's kind of where the ball diamond is. We undergrounded some major facilities. This is an old drainage culvert that ran through on the west side, and it's now been underground and become part of the play area. We've got the restrooms almost done, under construction there, and the child's playground down below. See the apparatus being moved in. Couple features here. If you recall, we have an overlook trellis that's kind of over towards Superior, looking over the bay. You can see the trellis in the top slide there, and the sidewalk running along Newport Crest on the bottom there. And then the bottom slide is the beginnings of the butterfly garden. We've got some of the concrete work done. We're starting to plant that now. Kind of an overview from the other side, looking towards the west. And then off from the other side of Superior, we're looking across. I did point out this slide because some people may think the park is unfinished. If you recall, along the Superior slope during the coastal process, they basically white-holed this slope here. They had some concerns about wetlands and other things. We were allowed to take out the pampas grass and some other invases, but it's left us a pretty denuded slope. I did actually send the Coast Commission an email today asking if they had just let us hydroseed that with CSS pallet, which is the same as the park, to kind of clean that up. I'm hoping they'll do something and let us do that relatively easily, but I'm holding my breath with the Coast Commission. So as for the schedule, we started back here in December of 2013, and construction began in January. Complete rough grading, basically at this point, we're 70% complete, and we're on schedule to be complete December 2014. With that, we wanted to announce that we're planning the grand opening event, December 6, 2014. That's a Saturday, and you'll get more information on that. Cost estimate for this park, running on basically on budget, you'll see the numbers there for the various phases, construction at $5.7 million, and the total anticipated cost is about $8.4 million when we're done. We're currently used about 3% of our construction contingency.
Dave, those numbers did not include about $5 million, as I recollect, to acquire the land in the first place from Caltrans.
Yes, this is just from when council said, "Here's the concept. Let's go forward and build a park." There was some right-of-way costs in there, as you recall.
And Dave, when you talk about the project has used 3% of the reserve, 10%, is that 30% of it, or it's literally 3% of the 10%?
When we awarded the project, we set aside about $570,000, 10% of the construction cost. Of that, we've used about 3% of that contingency.
Okay.
I think we'll come in about 4%, but again, not going to jinx it at this point.
Okay.
And I did want to mention, because the questions come up, we're in Sunset Ridge Park right now, but I'm looking across Superior to the east, and you'll see Sunset View Park. This is another small park we're actually working on right now. Tony Petros has been working with the residents on this, and we agreed to do some work on the top there. So you can see the grading going on. Little park, not a lot. It's part of the tip that goes all the way down to PCH and Superior, and we expect to have that done relatively soon. It's also tracking on budget and on schedule, December 2014 it'll be done. And it's not a whole lot of cost, but $322,000 is what we'll be investing in that park. With that, I'd open up to any questions or thoughts you may have.
Mayor Hill. Dave, excellent news, excellent report. It's not lost on me that, on a monthly basis, I can go on the city's website with a couple clicks of my mouse and follow the progress of these. So all of this material, all of this information is available to the public on our city website on a regular, real-time basis. There has been some question about the city's ability to deliver municipal projects on time and on budget, and this is precisely the right answer and the correct answer to all of those who question our ability to deliver. You are on budget. You are on schedule to bring about $15 million worth of projects for the public benefit down on the west side of town. So it's a great, great story for the city. It's a great ending for the people of Newport Beach, and it says a lot about our ability to deliver on some very, very significant projects.
Any further, Council?
Yeah. We're going to see in a minute that the financial position of our city is extremely strong, and that's a very good thing. It doesn't happen by accident. And what it does do is enable us to invest in public value in our city and invest in the improvement of quality of life in our city. And that redounds to the benefit of all of us in terms of improved property values and enjoyment as we go along. I think it is precisely the responsibility of this group, supported by staff, to do that, to invest in public value. And these two parks are a great example of such an investment. As opposed to have some who have indicated that they think we should take our cash and prepay our debt, not pay it, prepay it, when there's no need to. Our debt is easily handleable within our budget requirements, and I, for one, would never vote to take money away from building beautiful parks like this and investing in the quality of life in our city as compared to some financial maneuver that's of life in our city as compared to some financial maneuver that's just a feel-good as opposed to a real contribution to the quality of life in our community. That's Mr. Curry.
Well, Mr. Hinde, your point, I think it's exactly right, because if we had, for example, chosen to use our reserves to build the Civic Center project and not finance that project at a time when we had an opportunity through the Recovery Act to utilize a very advantageous debt structure, we would not have had the cash to undertake this project, Sunset Ridge Park, Marina Park, nor the beautification going on in West Newport along Balboa Boulevard, nor the extensive work that we've done to upgrade our 100-year-old water system. All of those projects would have required us to finance them at this point in time in a higher interest rate environment where we didn't have the advantage of taking advantage of the Recovery Act bonds to lower our debt service costs. So I think that speaks to your leadership on the Finance Committee and the wisdom of this council in moving forward in the way that we've done to manage our capital projects. And as we'll talk about later on, of course, that's been recognized by all three of the bond reading agencies as they have evaluated independently the city's financial status.
Any further comments? All right. Thank you, Dave. Excellent report. Keep up the good work. We'll move on now to--
Public comment.
I'm sorry, anybody from the public like to comment on this agenda item, study session Seeing none, we'll move on to SS Three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last council meeting, you requested an overview of our debt and pension obligations, and here we are today. I'll note and acknowledge that some of our slides are a bit difficult to follow, so we're going to move slow. And if you have questions as we go along, please feel free to jump in and ask your questions at that time. We follow a document called the Facilities Financial Plan, or Financial Plan. It's an award-winning, unique document designed to fund and replace our building infrastructure. In a community that is over 100 years old, community reinvestment is important to keep the community vibrant and looking good. All of the city's critical facilities are scheduled and to be replaced on a perpetual basis through a combination of regular general fund contributions, one-time development impact fees, a reasonable amount of debt, and investment earnings. Incidentally, we anticipate receiving over $90 million over the next six years to offset community impacts of current development. Given that we cannot meet all of our capital facilities obligations using just cash, what projects would you not do now if the city was completely adverse to debt? And when we look at this list today, it would be a pretty tough dilemma. So a reasonable amount of debt is prudent. It's been a part of our history. In 1905, we issued school bonds. The 1930-era bonds made our harbor what it is today. Our current water delivery system was built in the '80s, and the Central Library in 1992, and finally, the Civic Center in 2010. All top three rating agencies consistently rate the city as a top-quality credit, noting low debt profile, superior financial management, very strong reserves, a very strong economic base. All three rating agencies assigned the city a AAA rating in 2010. The rating was affirmed by Standard &amp; Poor's in March of 2014. Fitch reaffirmed the rating as recently as August of 2014. So this is all current news. Fitch considers debt less than 12% of revenues affordable and less than 6% as low. As you can see, at 4%, our debt-to-revenue ratio is really low. Here's another slide, just taking another way of looking at that same metric.
Dan, can I stop you right there? Can you please go back? I see in this slide that the revenues of the City of Newport Beach have gone up, and it looks like they're projected to increase over this timeline. Historically, I would imagine the revenues of the City of Newport Beach have gone up. It's been alleged that we're the agent of that increase in revenues, that somehow the city, by some act, some revenue-generating act, creates revenue for us. I was wondering if you or Mr. Kiff would like to comment on how revenue is generated in the city and why things go up.
I'll let Dan chime in in just a moment. Revenue has increased, and you're right, it's not a specific action of the city especially related to a tax levy, but it is other things that are important about this city. Things that have happened in the last five to 10 years are the Pelican Hill Resort. That's a $3 million increase per year in bed tax that didn't cannibalize other hotels. Overall, the hotel function in Newport Beach is doing really well, thanks to Visit Newport Beach and others. There is the opening of Newport Lexus, the Fletcher Jones continued success. Our restaurants are all a real core component of our sales tax. So all of those things matter, and the rate levied hasn't changed. What's happened is the activity has gone up because Newport is a desirable place to live, work, and play.
So the economic health of our community has been the primary contributor. The vitality of our businesses has been one of the primary contributors to that growth.
And to add to your point and what Mr. Han and Mr. Curry added, is that continued investment in the community has increased our property value. Property taxes or assessed property value is our number-one source of revenue for the city, and that increased investment not only benefits the city, but it also benefits our residents.
And of course, you know, we do, the city does charge fees for services it provides, and those fees come in two broad categories. One is fees for user-demand services like parks and rec programs and classes for kids and that sort of thing. All of those fees, those fees have gone up, but so has the revenue that supports them. That's a net-neutral activity for the city. So that increase in revenue is quite understandable and actually desirable in our community. And then the other broad category is fees for services that the city provides, like building plan check and so forth. The city actually offsets a great deal of its cost in that area, too, but those fees are cost-based. We do a regular analysis of the cost of providing those services. We compare the fees that we charge to other municipalities to make sure we're not out of line, and so I'm quite confident that our fee-based structure for these other fees is reasonable. And when it goes up, it goes up for a really good reason, generally, again, related to more activity.
Let me just follow up on Councilmember Hinde's point, because when we adjust fees in the city, we do an analysis, and that's really based on Proposition 218 in the law, isn't it? Don't we have a requirement that we assess what it actually costs us to do these services and charge a fee that's equivalent to or less than our actual cost? Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
So I was at a panel talking to candidates from a different city. One guy said, "I'm never going to raise any fees because I just never going to raise fees." And I looked at him and said, "Well, did the zumba fee come down from Mount Sinai on a stone tablet that you're never going to raise at your park?" Because what I've observed is that if you don't periodically adjust fees, and we adjust them up and down. Last time we did this, we had about 100 fees that went up, we had about 50 fees that went down because we've become more efficient in how we do the service, and about 20 fees that we've abolished altogether. But the point of it is, if you don't adjust these fees periodically over time, all of the taxpayers in the city end up subsidizing some of the taxpayers in the city. For example, people who routinely take advantage of building permits and inspection fees. And if you look closely at it, in our city, what would happen is that the person who would get the biggest subsidy, this was true on the harbor fees, by the way, if we didn't adjust fees periodically, would be the Irvine Company. Every taxpayer in the city would be subsidizing to some extent or the other the Irvine Company if we didn't periodically adjust fees so that we recover the actual cost of service that go to specific taxpayers that are paid for by all taxpayers. Does that correct? Okay, thank you.
And we are on a rolling basis, are we not, to look at those fees every three years?
Right. That's correct.
All right, please go on.
So we've been asked, why not retire the Civic Center debt now? Well, like what you've touched on before, that would cost about $44 million in early redemption premiums. We would lose a very generous subsidy, and it also reduces our rainy day funds. And it's important, more importantly, it wrecks the carefully managed facilities financial plan, delaying several projects.
So let's just stop there, because several candidates, for example, in this election have suggested that the thing for us to do is to sell city assets, city properties, city real estate, and use those proceeds to pay down our debt. But what I think this is telling us is that for every dollar of debt that we pay off under the strategy put forward by some of these candidates, it would cost $1.44 to pay it off. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Have you asked our financial advisors about this? Do any of them or our investment bankers generally believe that that would be a cost-effective or financially prudent thing to do?
We have, and they would not recommend that we go invest in that endeavor.
In fact, it would be considered financial malpractice to execute a refunding that produced a negative present-value savings like this one would do. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Yeah. So $44 million, let's just stop there, because we just heard that that's more or less an amount equivalent to the cost of the two parks that are under construction. So that's the sacrifice that we would make if we were to follow that advice, isn't it?
That's correct. Another question we've been asked, is the cost 232 million or 126 million? So are--
Dan, let me stop you there, because there's another question, because I've heard one of the candidates as recently as last night suggest that the cost of City Hall was $126 million. But in fact, the entire Civic Center cost $126 million. I understand that the cost of the City Hall itself was about $67 million. Is that more or less correct, Mr. Batum? So when people talk about this cost and they talk about the Taj Mahal City Hall, what they're really also talking about when they quote this number is the library extension, it's the parking garage, it's the civic green, it's the $8 million of cost of dirt that we moved so that we could lower City Hall down and the whole project, so that when you're driving on MacArthur, you can still see the ocean and not looking at a building. It's the cost of what is the fifth-largest park in the city. All of those, it's the cost of the emergency center, it's the cost of the community center that's very well-used across the way, the cost of the civic green. All of those costs are included in that price, right? So when I asked Mr. Piagata the other day about if he were going to reduce the cost of the Civic Center, what would he take out? And he responded, and it's good that we have this picture here so people can see it, he would not have expanded the library, and he would not have built the parking garage. So that parking garage that you see, imagine its footprint to be, it's four stories, four times larger than it is, which would pretty well take up just about all of the civic green and all of the park. Wouldn't that more or less be the case? So it would have no park. What it would have is a big parking lot. So where we had 2,000 people the other night for the Eagles Tribute Band, or where we had 1,000 people this weekend for the Food and Wine Festival, they'd all be standing on an asphalt parking lot if some of these people's vision were to be actuated. Is that correct? Yeah. And then we think about the fact, too, that if you didn't build the library, you would exit the first floor of the Civic Center, and you would walk and you would look into the second floor of the library window. And in order to get in, you'd have to sort of walk around the hall. It's not clear whether they would have built stairs, and slide down the hill and then walk around to the front of the library to get in. Is that how it would have to be? Doesn't seem to be a very synergistic strategy to me.
So where the 232 million comes from is some people have added up all the future debt service payments, even those that are more than 20 years out, and lumped that into our debt. Now, in our opinion, this is more political than fact-based, as it completely ignores the time value of money. Intuitively, we know that money today is worth more than it is years from now. So let's take an example where $15,000 is repaid in five equal installments of $3,000 per year. The sum of all future payments, that $15,000 in the future, is, by this illustration, this is just taken out of a textbook, is worth less than it is today. In this short illustrative example, it's about $4,200 less than the future value. Now, when you stretch that out to 30 years, it only magnifies the disparity between the future value and the current present value. So now, applying that to the Civic Center, because, you know, money in pocket today has the benefit of compounding interest, and that 126 million in the future would add up to 232 million over 28 years, we can see that the present value of those future payments is substantially less. And that essentially is the $126 million that we originally borrowed. So it befuddles us to why finance-minded folks ignore the principle of time value of money. The Civic Center debt, four years from issuance, is now at $116,000, excuse me, and those are the simple facts.
Unless there are any questions about that section, I'm going to move next to the pension part of what Mr. Mayor Hill asked for. So let me be very clear as I start, that I do think pensions deserve the discussion they're getting of late. In fact, your council has been focused on pensions since 2009, 10. And as to that debate, the sky isn't falling, but nor are we completely out of the woods. And I'll talk about that. So I give great credit to the council and to our employees to help solve this problem, and I'll tell you why. So the problem began primarily with two things, one starting in the early 2000s and the other in 2008, '09. First was two generous benefits, given at a time when most pensions were fully funded or overfunded. As you can see from the chart at that one time in 2007, we were where we should be. Our assets were the asset level that they needed to be. Next came the collapse of the equities market in 2008, 2009. When you jump to 2014, the end of this chart here, you can see where our Pers assets should have been by that time, that's that top line, that top black dash line, absent the collapse. So even though Pers has had some great returns, 13%, 18%, it's not nearly enough to erase the shortfall, as the returns came in on a lower level of assets. So let's look at this chart next, which is the flip side. What is the hole that needs to be filled versus the assets on hand? In 2007, our unfunded pension liability was only 1.7 million, and that's off the chart, literally. It was nearly fully funded, as I noted. But you can see what happened by 2009. The market's had its ups and downs, with some of those good ups more recently. We saw $60 million in progress in our unfunded liability in just two years. That's a remarkable change. That's where 2012 comes to 2014 in the light blue line. But hold that thought, because very wisely, Pers got more realistic. They lowered their investment assumptions, they reviewed how long retirees are living and at what age they retire, and they conservatively smoothed out the ups and downs. So here we are today. Our $60 million improvement in two years, which is big news, is actually a $20 million improvement when the realistic mortality is factored in. And that is factored in. That is the tough medicine we know we've had to take, and yet we still have a lower pension liability than we did two years ago. So let's go back now to what's been done since '09 and '10, back to the role that the council and employees have taken to address the problem. First is the employees' contributions.
First is the employees' contributions. So, the employees are now paying seven-point-four million of the twenty-seven-point-four million paid to PERS this year. That's twenty-seven percent, up from zero percent in two thousand and four. I venture this percentage is more than nearly any other city's employees pay in our region. It was done through difficult negotiations. The twenty-seven million is also included in our budget documents. So, when folks wonder, why have expenditures risen at the city, know that this is in part why. We're keeping up with our pension costs as we must do, and the employee contribution itself is counted in that number. Remember, a budget document includes expenditures of any, from any source of revenue, whether it's a grant, a payroll deduction, or sales taxes and property taxes. So, our budget grows, but it includes this whopping deduction counted as part of the growth.
And is the seven-point-four counted in our revenue? Or as a payroll reduction, is it not counted in our revenue?
Correct. It's not recorded in our revenue base.
I had a question, if I may. People have asked me, why was it that public employees were not paying anything into their pensions? And it's my understanding that our predecessors back to the nineteen-nineties, they weren't stupid people, they were actually very smart people. And what was happening at that time is that PERS wasn't charging for the pensions, the rates were extremely low. And so, the folks that negotiated contracts at the time said, look, we'll pick up the pensions, you've got to keep your salaries down. So, that's kind of how that came to the zero. That was the trade-off at that time. And then, as we learned, PERS turned out to be an unreliable financial partner, and things happened. And I, I know Dan and I have had a conversation, he detailed the, the things that happened around two thousand eight. And it was during that timeframe that all of a sudden, our liability went from a few million to two-hundred million. So, what, if you don't mind, what were those factors, Dan, so that everyone can have the benefit of that?
So, Dave went down a, a list, well, obviously, the, the largest component was the, the equities crash in two thousand and, in two thousand eight. Then, the more realistic assumption changes, including the change in the discount rate. That is the rate in which PERS assumes the assets will grow, and they changed, they reduced it from seven and three-quarters to seven and a half. They changed the way that they amortize the outstanding liability. They, they had a, a, a means in which the liability was assumed would, would never really get paid off. And I think Dave has a slide on that. And the last thing, they, they took a look at the mortality assumption. So, all, the change in assumptions plus the chain, the, the dramatic drop in the equities market all contributed to a, a large unfunded liability.
Okay, and I know you were probably here in ninety-five. What, like, for example, safety, what was our rate for safety then versus rate for now?
I can't speak to, to specifically ninety-five, but, but you were right, our unfunded liability was, was low. And in fact, in two thousand and seven, the city's unfunded liability was only one-point-seven million. So, the, the actuaries also equally don't want plans to get overfunded. So, that was one way of dealing with is instead of increasing benefits, they, they didn't charge employers a contribution rate. So, looking forward, if, if things get close to funded again, we'll, we'll have to grapple with, you know, what do we do now that we can't take pension holidays? Continuing on then, coming back to the pension progress slide. Additionally, we have a hundred fewer full-time employees since two thousand and ten. We have two new tiers, including the state's Pension Reform Act tier. And very importantly, we have a fixed amortization agreement with PERS. I'm going to talk about that in plain English. It's fairly simple. So, historically, PERS has had a lenient way of looking at unfunded liabilities. As Dan mentioned, left unattended, the liability would continue to grow unabated, and that's the old way on this chart here, the blue line. But starting in April of two thousand thirteen, your city council, after the Finance Committee recommended it on a unanimous vote, said that punting the problem forward was no longer a financially sound policy. You chose to pay off that liability over a fixed period of time, and that is the new way, and we are a year into it. The new way pays off the liability over that fixed period, and it's twenty-five years for safety, and those are police and fire and lifeguards, and twenty-one years for all other employees. So, the city will pay an extra seventy-two million dollars for PERS payments over the next thirty years, but will avoid one-hundred-and-thirteen million in interest expense and eliminate that unfunded liability in that timeframe. So, this and the council's other actions that I noted, won it a Rose Award from the Orange County Taxpayers Association just for pension reform.
I think, I think it's also worth noting, Dave, that those amortization periods are well below the maximum allowable amortization. We, we elected to amortize them--
To take a shorter one.
Much more quickly than we could have.
So, what more can be done? Getting to a couple of questions we get. We're often asked this. A couple of things could be done. One is another fresh start, and I'll talk about that momentarily. Always on the list is more outsourcing in a thoughtful way. But I want to be clear that what we're seeing with a new hire under the Pepper tier, as much as they pay for their pensions when they come in, can sometimes be less expensive, actually, than outsourcing, especially with the changes in law relating to prevailing wage on the outside. It's an interesting dynamic that we have to do thoughtfully. It's vital to continue our partnership with our employees so that we can continue to equalize pension contributions, but in a way that doesn't hurt our competitiveness to recruit good employees. Reform at the state level should continue. There are important positions that the city has taken regarding specialty pays that the PERS Board chose not to adopt, but they should adopt. And for those who say, hey, just move everybody to a 401K plan or get out of PERS entirely, those are either entirely impractical or, in one case, illegal.
Dave, I want to, I want to talk to you a little bit about the thoughtful outsourcing and continued partnerships. It's my understanding, correct if I'm wrong, that somewhere between sixty and seventy percent of our obligations are for employees who've already come through the system and are not in our employ any longer.
That's correct. I consider that a baked cake.
So, a baked cake. So, if we're already looking at a hundred fewer full-time employees, new tiers, we're already addressing what we can right now. But we don't want to necessarily do that on the backs of the people who would be paying for the sixty or seventy percent. There comes a, a point of equity in this calculus that we need to be mindful that we have the obligation to the folks that have already come through, and those people who are, are in our employ now, they pay their share, but not for what's already out of the pipe.
That's very true, Mr. Petros. And, and actually, with at least the current calculations, the employees are paying a share of the retired employees' obligation already. And it, and it does, it does make it challenging to get the top employees when other cities are either choosing not to do this or don't have to do that.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Curry.
One of the ideas, it's also been suggested by some out there, is that we sell some revenue-producing assets, such as the exist, the old City Hall site, and we use that proceeds, which I think would be about six and a half million dollars if it's owned as our tell, and pay down debt. We talked about, you know, our, our COP debt. They would also suggest maybe you can pay off the pension debt. But when we pay off a mortgage or you pay off a bank loan, the loan's extinguished and it goes away, and you are paid off no matter what happens in the future. But that's not the case with pension obligation, is it? If you were to pay it down to zero, you would still have risk of market performance that could cause that deficit or that obligation to reappear. Is that not correct?
That's correct. And as, as Dan Moteshevitz has said, the, the more careful way is to put in cash and a, an allocation method over time and, and work with our actuaries to make sure we're putting the right amount of money in when it should be put in because you do risk, again, not like a more, unlike a mortgage, having a liability at the end if you didn't carefully time the two things.
So, the key there is the dollar-cost averaging strategy of putting money in when the market's up, putting market, money in when the market's down, putting money in over time because the obligation continues over time as people retire.
That's correct.
As opposed to putting money in all at one time. So, the question is, is would it be a good time to put a lot of cash, to sell an asset, to sell the old City Hall site, for example, and take all of that cash and put it in? Because isn't that essentially a sort of a, a Las Vegas-style bet on the direction of Wall Street?
I think, we have an example, we, we can show that if someone had made a similar bet at the top of the market in two thousand and eight, I believe that we had put in all of our reserves at that level, eighty-one million, we would have lost twenty-five million of it overnight.
Lost twenty-five million within a matter of weeks during the market crash. So, as I look at the market, I just read in the Wall Street Journal, we've had now seven-hundred days without a ten percent correction. We've seen the S and P and the Dow at all-time record highs. We're now in the fifth year of a bull market. Would our financial advisors tell us that now would be a good time to make a bet that the market would continue to go up unabated?
Of course, our financial advisors would probably not want to bet on what future interest rates would hold, but it is a pretty safe bet. You would never want to enter into the market with a lump sum amount. They would--
Especially now.
Especially now.
Well, it would be a bet on the stock market, not on interest rates because interest, the stock market is now, like I say, at an, at a, at an all-time record high in a five-year bull market. So, making a bet that we would have a continued bull market would be a pretty aggressive bet indeed by somebody who apparently knows more about the direction of the economy and the stock market than I feel comfortable knowing.
It's certainly frightening to us to think about possibly.
You sort of went quickly over the not practical or legal. Do you want to explain those a little?
Sure. PERS has an interesting way of calculating the, the get-out-of-PERS fee, and what they do is they calculate it based on the treasury yield versus their long-term investment yield, which makes that number completely impossible to attain. The second thing about moving everyone to a 401K plan, we can, as a member of PERS, we can only offer what PERS offers. And the PERS Board and the legislature, and I think much to even Governor Brown's chagrin because he proposed a 401K plan for new hires, and the legislature didn't pass it, and the PERS Board won't do it administratively. So, we don't have that choice for a new hire. It's our hope that we, we will have that at some point soon, and maybe the legislature's makeup will change and we'll have some more favorability in that regard.
Leslie.
One of my concerns that I mentioned earlier, PERS being an unreliable financial partner, is, you know, we're good stewards, well-run city, we, we pay every year, we eliminate this two-hundred million dollars, could have been used for other things. And then, PERS says, oh, thanks a lot, your new number is three-hundred million or something. I mean, how can we, is there anything we can do to control that? And, I mean, how is this going to ultimately play out? Or, you know, you have bankruptcies where all of a sudden, the pool gets smaller. I mean, what is your response to just really long-term?
Well, we're, we're not in anyone else's pool. We're in our own pool, which is a nice thing--
Okay.
--that we're in control of our own destiny. But noting what you said about PERS in general, what, we're hopeful that, we, we certainly watch as a PERS member who they're hiring for, and what is their investment approach, who they're hiring to do their investments, who they're hiring to do their actuaries. We have a very close relationship with our actuary. That's our, our guy or gal that works with us on everything about us, our own employees, how long they live, how soon they retire, how big our payroll is, all those things. So, we, we actually feel quite confident in our actuaries' ability to give us the right numbers on a regular basis. So, I'm, I do want to focus on another option similar to a fresh start. It's a discretionary payments option. We could pay down the unfunded liability by making extra payments on, as Mr. Curry noted, a dollar-cost average basis. So, for the audience, a formal fresh start might be likening, likened to refinancing your home, your home mortgage from a thirty-year loan to a fifteen-year-old loan where you're bound and committed to those higher monthly mortgage payments can be a very good thing. But the discretionary payment option is more akin to agreeing to make extra principal payments on your existing mortgage, done entirely at your discretion, on your schedule, with your financial advisor, without doing a new mortgage plan. And we believe that the Finance Committee should at least look at this option in the future, and we'd certainly welcome your thoughts about it. And you could see this chart is kind of illustrative of what could happen with additional payments. The, the blue line gets you down closer to zero than the green line. So, I'm about to conclude here. I want to focus, just kind of wrap this up by noting something Mr. Hen said. We believe as a staff that there's great value in keeping the community looking great. Our building's updated, our park's vibrant, our medians and parkways colorful, the streets well-paved, the pipes working. With that vibrant infrastructure and great safety, cultural and economic, educational and recreational programs that go with it, we help keep the community property values high. So, this reinforces those qualities that our residents and businesses demand of what is a very prosperous community. It's a virtuous cycle, and it does have great benefits. So, with that, I'll conclude, and we welcome any other further comments or questions you might have for us.
One thing that I would like you to comment on so that everyone has a understanding, give us the organization, if you will, from decisions on finance backwards up through the system. And we have a, the city council has a Finance Committee that reviews these things. We have the Finance Department. What's the makeup of the Finance Department? What kind of employees do we have in that department? What kind of expertise do they have? And then, what kind of consultants do we work with?
So, from finance staff, we have, we have, we have certified public accountants on staff. We have a, an attorney on staff in the, in the Finance Department that helps us with legal issues. We have several individuals that have master's degrees in, in public policy. So, I think we have a very capable staff. I think that City of Newport Beach does attract a, a very good quality candidates. We employ investment advisors to, to help us manage our, our investment portfolio. We've essentially outsourced that function and used professional investment advisors since the early nineties. We employ financial advisors to advise us on capital markets, and we have a close relationship with both financial advisors, underwriters, as well as a bond counsel that can either, any, one of them can help us, advise us on borrowing strategies that we, we may employ. Sometimes we even employ strategy folks from the Government Finance Officers Association where they, if we're looking at a particular strategy, they can help advise us on, on deploying that strategy. So, we, we use all tools at our disposal. Certainly, the Finance Committee helps us with developing higher-level policies that, that guide our actions moving forward. Folks can also look, sorry, Mr. Hill, the council has adopted a series of policies relating to its financial stewardship, and those are all available to any reader on the website. They're the F-series, all the council policies F, and they're very detailed about debt structures, reserve policies, and I invite people to peruse those.
All right. Any further council comments? Councilman Hen.
Just one more comment. They say that election time is silly season. And I think that comes about because in the process of campaigning, people tend to make elliptical statements and over-exaggerate things and try to twist a set of facts to suit a purpose. I've been chief financial officer of publicly-held companies for thirty years. I've been the chairman of the city's Finance Committee for several of the past eight years, and on the Finance Committee all eight years. Any person who says that the spending of Newport Beach is out of control is just plain wrong. It is a silly statement. I know that because I have been at close range, at the controls, with city staff and our other council members of managing this city's financial standing. It is top-flight, and that has positioned us-- It is top-flight, and that has positioned us to continue to do things like build parks when other cities are struggling just to meet payrolls. Now, it's a fair question, should we spend as much as we did on the Civic Center, for example? That's a fair question. I wonder about the people that are saying today that we spent too much, where they were when we were making these decisions, when we heard practically not a word of opposition to these plans, despite dozens of public meetings and exposure about all of this. But nevertheless, should we spend more money for a park or more money for a fire station? Those are all fair questions. What is not at question here is that this city is in very sound financial condition and is very carefully managed every day to keep it that way.
Was it not just four people with a dartboard?
Well...
Further council questions?
I confess to being a big spender. My district has, as it pertains to my district, you know, beautiful roads and bridges widened and seismic, and the bay got dredged, and then we have bike lanes now, landscaping, all that costs money. And the basic contract is that folks pay taxes. We have funds, and we put it back into the community after having reserves, after paying for our operations, after managing our utilities. It isn't, the contract isn't that you sit on money and don't improve the community. And if we hadn't do this, we'd have potholes. You know, we'd have bridges in disrepair. You know, we'd have parks that kids wouldn't want to play on. So expenditures can be very appropriate, and that's the contract when we do get tax dollars, and it would be completely inappropriate and irresponsible to sit on tax dollars beyond, after we've paid all those bills that I've mentioned. So I completely say I was very much a part of spending money on those types of things. I've been a critic of some of the things that happened here at City Hall, but that's behind us, and I hope that that doesn't repeat itself. So those would be my comments.
I think the other thing that's critical to note is that of all the elements that we do to keep property values high, the highest increase in the county this last year is all done without raising taxes. We live within the tax base that we are given that has not changed and will not change until the legislation might change. And I personally, and I think the rest of the council, would be opposed to the legislation changing. So, you know, we live within the tax base that we are given. That has not gone up. We've made the pie larger, however, through the improvements that we have done. And the Newport dividend that we issued this year of forgiving or relieving building fees, city building fees for residential rehab, has generated $50 million worth of renovation in the city, which has employed individuals, which has created an increase in property tax, which has created an increase in sales tax, not by increasing the rate, but by increasing the basis. And so that's how we grow, and with our continued savings in operations, not by cutting reserves or tapping reserves, but by making structural changes in the delivery of the service. Those changes, those savings, continue into the next budget, the next budget, and the next budget. And it's those elements that brought us through the recession vis-à-vis the strategic financial plan that was created by the council, and not only brought us through the recession with a balanced budget each year, but brought us through the recession with a reserve add each year as well. And it's that kind of forward-thinking that has put this city in the financial condition that it is, one of five in the state with a triple-A bond rating. Any further comment from the council? Open for public comments. Would anybody like to make a comment from the public?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. It's wonderful to hear that the city's debt is in such great shape. It's also wonderful to receive the information in such a way that the public has no idea what will be said here until they attend the meeting, making it very difficult to formulate insightful questions in advance. In view of that, I would like to remind you of City Council Policy A6, which is amended in May of last year, established a new procedure for placing items like this on the agenda. According to Section C3 of that policy, the mayor can ask the city manager to place an item on the agenda at any time, and the other council members can do so at one of these meetings. In all cases, what is put on the agenda by the city manager is not the requested item, but rather a vote by the full council as to whether city resources should be expended to prepare a more detailed presentation for consideration at a future meeting. I find this a strange policy because the Brown Act allows a vote on whether to put an item fully on the agenda to be taken at the time of the original request. Yet it is your policy. I would note that Mayor Hill asked for this item to be placed on the agenda at the last meeting, and here it is, on the agenda. But there was no vote then, or now, by the council majority as to whether the staff resources necessary to prepare this presentation should have been allocated. Those of us of a questioning turn of mind may wonder if the urgency of this presentation has something to do with the fact that there is an election coming in November, and residents of Newport Beach will be receiving election materials and maybe even their ballots before your next meeting. In that election, Mayor Hill will be facing an opponent who questions whether the city's debt is as fiscally sound and as responsibly managed as you have heard here today. In fact, as you know, there is a whole slate of candidates running on that theme, and two of you are also running for office. I do not necessarily endorse the slate of opposition candidates, but I do think having this glowing review hastily prepared at this exact moment smacks of a campaign stunt, and I would question whether a campaign stunt to benefit one of the candidates over his opponents is a proper use of public funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to comment? All right. Seeing none, we will move to public comments.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to make a quick note that we have an item on the closed agenda that I am going to be recusing myself from. It's the Lido House Hotel, or, excuse me, the, what is it? Yeah, the Newport, the Lido Partners litigation item, because I have a potential conflict with a business that I advise in the Viola Lido Plaza Shopping Center.
Thank you. All right. Public comments, please.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak under the public comments portion of the agenda?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I would like to surprise you by starting with a positive comment. I was skeptical when you contracted with Visit Newport Beach to handle the broadcast of the city council meetings. I'm still not sure I understand why that was necessary or even desirable, and I understand that since then, some people who view the broadcasts on cable TV have had problems with the transmissions, but I understand those have been largely corrected now. And what I wanted to say is I've noticed that the archival video segments that are posted on the internet are now available almost instantly, when in the past, residents had to wait two, three, sometimes more days before they would have a chance to review what happened at the meeting. I do not know who is responsible for that, but I would like to thank Tom Johnson and whoever else is for that increased timeliness. And now I will not surprise you by spending the rest of my time on Measure Y. Mayor Hill evidently thought it was urgently important for voters to hear directly from their government about the financial state of that government. I would like to suggest that it's at least equally important for the voters to hear from their government about what their choices are with Measure Y. One area of particular confusion that has emerged since you put this on the ballot is the status of the Irvine Company's so-called entitlements at Newport Coast. Some people tell us the Irvine Company has 1,001 hotel rooms pre-approved and ready to go if voters reject Measure Y. Others tell us that the new hotel rooms would have to go on top of the existing development and that they are unlikely ever to be built. Those of us who say the rooms are unlikely to be built say that because we believed our government when it told us last May that the purpose of initiating the land use elements, amendments, was to move allocations from places where they would not be built to places where they would. And we say that because the Irvine Company itself is required to submit to you an annual report detailing the status of Newport Coast. And if you read the report they submitted to you on September 10th last year, they said they had no plan to build anything more than the 1,104 hotel rooms that exist there today. They said that was the build-out condition. I find it curious that after more than a year, we're not getting an updated new annual report from the Irvine Company telling us about what the status of Newport Coast is so that we, the voters, might decide for ourselves what the truth is. Without that truth, I'm assuming Measure Y is a lie, and I am voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make comments during this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, then we are going to move into our closed session. Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session?
Yes, we do, Mayor Hill. The city council will adjourn to closed session to discuss Agenda Items 4A through C, including meeting with legal counsel to discuss the lawsuits entitled Crystal Morales versus City of Newport Beach and City of Newport Beach versus Lido Partners, as well as one item of anticipated litigation, and meet with labor negotiators Dave Kiff and Terry Cassidy regarding labor negotiations with all representative employees.
Thank you. We will stand adjourned until 7:00 PM.